Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for April 2nd, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Next item is agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff.
Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving into public communications. We have several proclamations, an employee of the month this afternoon, and then a legislature, or this evening, and then a legislative update. We're going to start with our employee of the month recognition. So each month here at the city, employees can nominate one of their coworkers for the honor of being employee of the month. And that means that the person that they're nominating tends to go above and beyond, really embody the mission, vision, values, and goals of the city of Kent. And it's not just in a special project, but on a daily basis. So this month, we are excited to honor our employee, April 2024 Employee of the Month, Heath Brackett. So Heath is our April Employee of the Month. He originally started working for the city on June 1st, 2016, when he was hired as a Public Works Engineering Technician III. He was promoted on July 17th, 2017, to a GIS Coordinator, and he moved into his current position as a GIS Supervisor on June 1st, 2021. As the GIS Supervisor, Heath organizes, coordinates, maintains, and maintains the activities, operations, software, and database of Public Works Department geographic information systems. I certainly hope you do not have to explain that on a daily basis in order to provide information and recommendations to management and staff. So it's those really cool, multi-layered maps. That, I think, has all of the data in it about a variety of things that are happening here at the city. He performs advanced technical work in the use of GIS software and workstations. Heath was nominated because he consistently demonstrates qualities in communication, teamwork, and innovation, making him a standout in Public Works and other city departments that GIS supports. Heath's innovation and input helped create a link between the internal GIS Data Viewer and LaserFIS. City easements are represented by points within affected parcels on maps that can be clicked upon to retrieve the associated documents within LaserFIS without staff having to do parcel searches and looking in multiple databases. It's a really important function for employees here at the city. It's a time-saving measure, create mailing lists, receiving development submittals, engaging public with answers on property questions. Heath's experience and technical knowledge of not only GIS software, but software in general, using geospatial components and getting that function to work within recent implemented technology, keeps the city moving towards providing sustainable services to the public that we serve. Heath's knowledge, caring, and willingness to assist city staff to meet their goals make him an asset to our organization. He keeps a great work attitude while having many expectations and requests of his time and professional skills at all levels while maintaining a can-do attitude. Heath can always be counted on to do the right thing for Kent. I love that statement. Of all of that that I just read, that makes me the proudest. Heath continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate him as our April Employee of the Month. Congratulations. Chad, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that said just about everything, but I have to say two things. Number one, Heath now, due to some internal reorganization, he pretty much heads up the city's graphic information systems. So there's a lot of coordination with the other departments. And so that kind of time savings and information sharing really is spread out in Police Department, Parks Department, all the city departments. And it's information that the whole city, we look forward to having that more available to the public as the years go on. So very excited to have him onboard for all these years. And just so happens, due to that reorganization, we had three new staff members come on yesterday, and I was able to let them know that their brand-new boss is the employee of the month.
Awesome.
So it's pretty good timing, but just really great working with Heath. And his supervisor, Eric Knowles, is with us today, too. Just excited to have a Public Works person, because I think all of 2023 without ones.
I think there-
He's also breaking a dry spell.
I think there may have been a challenge this year that I said we need to get some Public Works folks in this list, so thank you.
And Heath said he's fine really not saying all the justice stuff. Do you want to move it?
I don't.
Okay, so we would like to get a picture. Do you mind coming up here?
Sure.
Oh, wait a second.
I couldn't be the employee of the month without you.
I'm going to go by. I hear.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Every day, we rely on GIS more and more for the functions that are being performed at the city. And so the role and expertise that Heath brings to that position is definitely a huge value, so. All right, we are going to move into the proclamation portion of our agenda. The first proclamation that we have this evening is for Arbor Day. Whereas Arbor Day was established in 1872, which is an annual observance that celebrates the importance of trees and encourages tree planting and care. And whereas the city of Kent understood early on that trees not only enhance our environment and contribute to the aesthetic charm of our city, but also serve as a catalyst for economic prosperity and community cohesion. By championing their preservation, we affirm our commitment to fostering a sustainable and vibrant future for Kent. And whereas the city of Kent established a tree ordinance in 1971 alongside specialized tree maintenance crews in our parks and public works departments, this proactive measure not only ensures the preservation and regulation of straight trees within our thoroughfares, but also in our natural areas and parks, and underscores our dedication to fostering a greener, more sustainable cityscape. And whereas trees stand as silent guardians, purifying our air, enriching biodiversity, providing much-needed tree canopy for shade, and helping mitigate other impacts of climate change, their presence not only enhances the beauty of our landscapes, but also sustains the delicate balance of Kent's ecosystems, ensuring a more resilient community for all. Whereas in recognition of its commitment to trees and the environment, the city of Kent was named Tree City USA by the National Arbor Foundation in 2003 and every year thereafter, making this Kent's 22nd anniversary as a Tree City. And whereas the city of Kent continues to engage the community throughout annual volunteer events that beautify and conserve valuable trees and natural resources in our parks. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim April 6th as Arbor Day in the city of Kent, and I encourage all of our residents to consider planting or caring for a tree on their property, to take a moment to enjoy the trees in our local parks, and appreciate the beautiful, green, open spaces and forests we enjoy here in the Northwest. So Margaret, I'm going to have you come up. We'll do a quick picture, and then you can tell us a little bit about the trees in our city.
Hi, everybody. I'm Margaret Wagner, Kent Parks Natural Resources Coordinator. You might feel like you just saw me talking about Arbor Day, and you kind of did, because last year we celebrated in the fall. This year, we're back to spring on the calendar with the State Arbor Day. And also a perk to this year is we're here before the event, so I can ask you all if you would like to come out and help us celebrate and meet our 23rd Tree City USA year by helping us plant this weekend at Riverview Park. We'll be out there planting one large, this year it's a Gary Oak or Quercus gariana, Oregon white oak, that our Parks Urban Forester has selected for this year, and then we'll be planting several smaller trees and shrubs and doing some mulching as well, hopefully with better weather than our event in the fall for anybody who was there. So yeah, Jillian, our new Parks Urban Forester, will be leading the actual show with the tree. I'll be there wrangling humans and trying to keep us all happy and out of the rain, hopefully. So I think that's a big deal. It's just really good to be back here and honored to be accepting this once again. We'll be actually back speaking to you all in about a month with more of a program update, so excited to give you more information.
Margaret, thank you for your dedication to our park system and for passing on your knowledge to the humans that you are wrangling at those events.
Thanks.
It's so much fun to watch you engage with our residents and our students in particular that we're really, really lucky to have you, and thank you.
Thank you. I feel honored, and it's really nice to be in a city where we have such support, both from this group as a whole and from the faces I've seen out there at events in the rain, in the mud. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to the next proclamation on a much more serious topic. Joining us this evening is Kate Krug, the CEO of CASEARC. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, then Kate, I'll have you come up to the podium. We'll do a quick picture, then you can say a few words. Whereas by definition, sexual violence is any unwanted sexual contact, either in person or online, including sexual assault, harassment, and abuse. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the impact of sexual violence in communities across the state and nation, raising public awareness and educating communities on how to prevent it. And whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas rape is among the most underreported crimes for many reasons, including victims' fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized within the legal system. Additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism further oppress and silence victims. And whereas 41% of Americans have been personally subjected to harassing behavior online, and people from historically oppressed groups are more likely to experience online harassment mirroring inequities we see elsewhere in society. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concern for safety, physical and mental health conditions, including symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas, working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, join advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2024 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Kent, Washington. Together, we commit to a safer future for all of our children, young adults, families, and everyone in our community.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. You know, the first time I was here was with Dennis Higgins, and I know he couldn't make it today. I invited him to come along as well, but hopefully I can do okay by myself without Dennis here with me.
You'll do an amazing job.
Thank you. So as you heard, my name is Kate Krug, and I'm the CEO of the King County Sexual Assault and Resource Center, or CASEARC as we lovingly call it, a nonprofit that serves this city and all communities throughout King County. I'm here to accept the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation on behalf of that organization. And I just want to thank you all for being part of the solution to sexual violence. To the survivors in our community, I want to say, you are not alone. Sexual assault is common. Half of women and 1/3 of men have experienced sexual assault in their lifetime. People from marginalized communities, people whose disability, race, or ethnicity, gender, or sexual identities are at even greater risk. Chances are, you know someone who has been sexually assaulted. The trauma of sexual assault is something that can affect a survivor's mental, physical, and behavioral health, their ability to form healthy relationships, remain in school or the workplace, and so much more. But recovery from sexual trauma is possible with support. CASEARC assisted more than 4,800 individuals and their families in 2023. Almost half of CASEARC's clients are teens and children. We know that young people are the most vulnerable to sexual assault and the least likely to speak up about it, and the least likely to be believed. I want to let the community know that we are here, we're free and confidential, and help is available to all survivors or anyone who needs any information about sexual assault. Our 24-hour resource line is a good starting point at 888-99-VOTE. We always say we can't change what we can't talk about, so thank you for your leadership and your willingness to be loud with us. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and for choosing to lead this organization that helps so many residents in our city. One of the things that you said that stood out to me is that everyone in this room knows someone that's been impacted by sexual violence. Every year at the Be Loud Breakfast, when that question is asked and that room stands up, it is the most powerful thing that I can think of. And I know that CASEARC is working towards making sure that fewer people are standing, but for now, this work needs to be done. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll bring Dennis back next time. All right, our next proclamation is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So that is a very long title for our friends at 911, that calm voice on the other end of the line when you're having your very worst day. So joining us is Vani Mayer. Vani, I think this is your first time at our council meeting in your new role. Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation, then I will have you come up. We will do a quick picture, and we'll go from there. So it says, whereas Valley Communications staff are essential first responders, they play a critical role in effectively coordinating emergency services to ensure the health and safety of our residents, businesses, and visitors 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas Valley Communications' call receivers and dispatchers endure long hours, abnormal schedules, and stressful work situations daily, their ability to remain calm under pressure has saved the lives of countless Kent residents, employees, and visitors. And whereas the city of Kent honors the men and women who play a vital role in the protection of our community members, businesses, and visitors. And whereas Valley Communications has been successfully serving the public, our public safety communication needs in the city of Kent since 1977. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7 through 13, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Kent, Washington, and urge all of our residents to pay tribute to our 911 call receivers, dispatchers, support staff and managers, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. Want to join me?
Thank you, Mayor Ralph, councilmembers, community. I have to say, this is such an honor to be here and a privilege, more so to recognize the faces behind 911. And one of those faces is Tara. I wanted to bring her today because while it's an honor for me to stand up here, they're doing the heavy lifting. They're the ones out there making sure that our communities, the public, our partner agencies are safe, and they're getting the need they need, they're getting the resources they need. So usually, I like to speak off the cuff, but I'm going to read a little because I don't want to miss any of Tara's greatness, because it's an honor for her to be here. So Tara's been with ValleyCom for almost 25 years. For the over 20 years, Tara has maintained and exceeded standards on her yearly evaluation. That's pretty amazing to have 20 years of exceed standards, especially in a business where the inherent trauma can wear on someone. You can get compassion fatigue, you can get worn down, but not Tara. She rises above. Not only does she care for the field units and those accessing 911, she cares for all employees in the center. She's active on the peer support and critical incident teams, serving both internally and externally, along with her beautiful service dog, Tootsie. She's one of our favorites as well. Tara, I'm pleased to announce that Tara has won the Washington APCO, which is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, Award for Sustained Superior Performance for Washington State. What an honor and well-deserved. From her nomination, with her tenure, Tara is a recognized voice on the radio and a presence in the com room. She is an accomplished dispatcher with an aggressive, which cracks me up because she's as tough as a gummy bear, aggressive and proactive approach towards her job responsibilities. Her priority is the safety of those she serves, who she serves, every day. Tara should receive this award due to the extraordinary level of commitment she has provided over the years and over this year, and as well as many prior years. There is such a predictability in her character, she remains positive, accountable, and supportive of the goals and the missions of ValleyCom 911 and the agencies we serve. This nomination acknowledges a talented, unique, and consistently motivated individual. Although she works without any expectation of attention, she is one of the most deserving candidates who should be recognized. So this is the face of 911. This is your community member. This is the person serving you. While our 911 professionals may not be on the scene of the accident with you, the house fire, the robbery, or the CPR, they are the heroes behind the headsets, who is your lighthouse in the storm. They are your connection. They rise up every single time. As Executive Director, I could not be more proud of the individuals I serve, because I serve them, because they serve you. So Tara, we appreciate you. We're thankful for you, and I'm so glad that you came. It took some talking into to get her out in the-
But we're glad you came, too. Thank you for being here, and thank you for everything you do.
And we appreciate your support and leadership, Mayor, and the support of our community, so thank you very much.
So one of the roles that I have in this position is getting to be on the executive board at ValleyCom. And every month, we get to hear the stories of the amazing work that our call receivers and dispatchers do, to be that voice, that calm voice in the storm, and help people that are calling in. And I meant that when I said like, it's their worst day, and you are there to help them through that, and then also to make sure that our officers stay safe, that our firefighters stay safe, that our paramedics are where they need to be. So thank you very, very much. All right, we are going to move on now to community events. Council President Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have upcoming events at SSO Shover Center on April 4. It's Mar simi. April 5 is Tacoma Stars and Chihuahua Savage Playoff Game. April 10 is Paw Patrol Live: Heroes Unite. Such an exciting event. I get excited every time I read that. May 9 is Kent Chamber of Commerce Regional Business Expo. And May 18 is Life Search 2024. And June 1 is our Kent International Festival. An amazing event for our community. That's an all-day event, and that is all the events I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the week of April 8 through 12, it's the annual curbside spring cleanup. And so you have the opportunity to put in extra 10 bags of trash out on the curb. Do that on your regular trash day, and it will be picked up. You might want to check the website. There are some rules, like can't be over 60 pounds and some other things. April 19, there's a mini recycling event right down the street at the Kent Library. That is it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Michaud.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two parks events. Green Kent is back. Woohoo. So the first event is Arbor Day, which we heard about. That's this Saturday from 9 to noon at Riverview Park, and they'll be planting some trees. And then the next event is on Earth Day, April 20, at Clark Lake, where you can help remove some blackberries and plant some native plants.
Thank you. All right, that brings us down to the last item under public communications, and I would like to invite Senator Kaufman up for a legislative update. Senator Kaufman, if you'd like to join us at the podium, please. We can do a-
I just thought that was part of toward, oh, sorry. I'm just joking around.
Our photo intern is not here any longer.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Ralph. I appreciate it. Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to be here and provide an update. I'm Claudia Kaufman, State Senator for the 47th Legislative District, which includes the east half of Kent, Covington, and the north part of Auburn. And it's been a wonderful pleasure to be in the opportunity to help work with the city of Kent on a number of issues. One in particular was one brought forward by the speed cameras and safety cameras that came up in the state legislature that allows additional speed safety cameras throughout public highways that go through a city. And it also changed in which the manner in which those funds are utilized or directed. And I worked with the city of Kent to ensure that your funds would be directed to what you had prioritized in terms of the body cameras that are worn by police officers, as well as the dash cams. So that was a priority that was very hard fought to get that in. It kind of made itself in inches and inches, but in the end, we were successful in that. So it was a pleasure working with you and your team on that. And then for the city of Covington, I worked with them on securing and ensuring that we preserve the $1 million for the expansion on Highway 516 that runs through the city of Covington. And for Auburn, I also worked to secure $258,000 for the design development of their downtown Auburn Plaza. So those are some of the local wins that we were able to bring forward, and I'm really happy for the opportunity to serve in that role. Some of my individual bills that I worked on, one was around as a family caregiver. If anyone has a family caregiver, has been a family caregiver, there is a definition of what family is. And so my bill expanded that definition to include in-laws. So a mother-in-law or daughter-in-law or father-in-law could be a family caregiver. Family, the definition of family is different in different cultures and different communities. And so we need to respect and ensure that we have equity in the services that we provide to our communities. I also worked on a bill, which is also close to my heart. I'm not sure how many were all here in 2001, but in 2001, here in Kent, my father went missing. And my father went missing right here in Kent. And so having worked with a number of communities, you know, there are some things that we did last year in creating a toolkit for families who have a missing member, and you know, how do you get through all of these things? What are the steps? And this year, I had a bill that worked with Washington State Agency's Department of Human Health and Human Services, and also with the Washington State Patrol to help link information, to help identify if a person, you know, it's like a proof of life, you know, is that person alive? is that person alive? I mean, that's the number one thing that you think of when you have a missing member, a missing loved one. So that's always been close to my heart. Another one in terms of things that are close to my heart is developmental disabilities. And having a daughter with developmental disabilities has always been something that I really want to work on. And there is a facility in eastern Washington called Lakeland Village, and it was created and began as a Washington State institution in 1914, and where a number hundreds of individuals with developmental disabilities were sent and spent years. And I was actually contacted by a woman who was doing her family tree and doing her ancestry, and she discovered she had an aunt who was placed at Lakeland Village. But, you know, there are, there are certain rules within the state government, and I'm sure within the local government, in which preservation of records, you hold onto records for only so many number of years. It's usually 50, but this one it was 75. So if it was more than 75 years ago, the records had been destroyed. So my bill was to preserve those records, to create a plan to identify all those records and how we can work to digitize all that information and preserve it, not only for families, but for state history. And then there are a number of things that worked on in terms of housing, healthcare, behavioral health, and record investment in behavioral health facilities, behavioral health services, addressing the opioid and the fentanyl crisis that we all face in all of our communities. Additional work for housing, additional funding for special education. And I also had a joint memorial resolution to request the federal government to pay their fair share, to pay what they promised, a 40% of special education funding. I think they're currently at 17%. So those are some of my things that I championed, and I'm really happy to be able to share them with you. And I'd also like to say that the legislature is much more than just going to committees and voting on the floor. It's, you get involved in everyday lives of people that come to visit. I have so many people who come to visit, constituents. There's resolutions on the floor, just like you did this evening, the resolution on Martin Luther King Day, the resolution on Lunar New Year, the resolution on the Sikh community. These are all things in which we have interactions and we have visits with a number of people from Green River. I had a number of students from Green River College come down. So it's very, very interactive, and I truly invite you. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd, for coming down. It was great to see you in Olympia. But when you do come to Olympia, please feel free to call my office. I'd be happy to visit with you. And I guess my final point I'd like to say is I had a number of the youth page, there's a youth page program in the state legislature, youth from 13, 14, 15, can come down and page, to be a page in the state senate. I had four this year, so I would just like to encourage all of you and everyone else to, if there's a youth that you'd like to come down and spend a week in Olympia and learn the process. I mean, it's more than just running mail. I mean, they have classes and they have time on the floor, they have time in committee. It's very interactive, and the students were really, really happy. So those are some of my updates, and I thank you again for the opportunity to come down. And I would like to say that I'd love to work in partnership with the city to continue to address all the, all the needs and all the wonderful things that we have going in the City of Kent.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming down this evening. I can, this page program, my son was a page actually quite a few years ago, and it was a wonderful experience for him. So I can highly recommend that. And on the traffic bill, we are very grateful. If that traffic camera bill would have passed in the form that it was introduced, or even where we were up until the very last moment, it would have been absolutely devastating for the City of Kent and public safety. It is what, those cameras are what pay for our body camera program, and I don't know where we would have been with the funding had we lost that. So, councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Boyes.
Thank you for being here, Senator Kaufman. And we know, like, you know, serving the public is a thankless job, right? So it just wasn't a tough thing. But I was just curious, just from a process perspective, you know, we as a council, our number one legislator is probably was public safety, right? And we had that senate bill 6076, many of us went down and testified. We have Senator Kaiser, who sponsored it along with House Chris Stern. And, you know, from Kent, you know, when you look at the ratio of police, the national average 2.31 per thousand, and for Kent, we about 1.2, which is half per thousand for a police officer. I'm just curious, the process, when you go about sponsoring the bill versus supporting the bill, how you go about, I mean, there's so many bills, and I get it, I'm just curious, this particular one, just how you go about making those decisions?
Well, the senate version that Senator Kaiser brought forward and was the sponsor for went through a different committee that I don't sit on. I currently sit on transportation, and I sit on human services, and I also sit on local government. And I believe that went to probably Ways and Means. I'm not sure exactly which committee. I don't sit on Ways and Means.
Yeah, they go through the Ways of Mean, but I'm talking from a sponsorship perspective, though. Anybody can sponsor a bill, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just asking. I mean, I'm not just throwing it out there. I mean, we just felt like public safety is just really important, a lot of things going on in the city, and I'm not trying to question you or anything like that. Don't take it that way. It's just that, you know, we just felt like that was a very important bill for the city.
And you had two great champions, one in the House and one in the senate.
Okay.
And they both represented Kent and represented Kent well in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senator Kaufman, thank you for coming down here and thank you for serving the community. I know it's, it's a hard work and it's a thankless job, but we appreciate you being there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you again. We appreciate the update and the work for Kent in the legislature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I gotta do my selfie then. Guys, ready?
Here, I bet you know what. Chad, do you want to come up and take a picture?
Not you, TJ.
I can't get a phone.
He'll do a selfie on his cell.
My arm's not long enough.
Nope, Chad's got it. Senator Kaufman, if you want to come, if you want to come over into the middle, then we can get the whole council in there.
You guys want to squeeze in? Get set up. We'll just stand back here.
There we go. Yes, definitely, definitely. Dukes. Thank you. Thank you for coming down tonight. Each member of our council sits on multiple committees outside of their work here in these council chambers, and the purpose of that is to make sure that Kent's voice is represented at the regional and the state level. It's really important that we are a part of those conversations, whether it be around policy, or funding, or sometimes both. So this section of the agenda is an opportunity to report out on some of those activities that have taken place over the last couple of weeks. I'm going to start out, I had Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board last week, and the item of note on that agenda was work that Puget Sound Regional Council is doing in obtaining some pretty significant grants from the federal government around climate. So all of the work that they're doing to evaluate issues that we've got around environment and climate, and there is more money right now flowing out of the federal government than we have ever seen, and so a lot of work is being done to make sure that that money is coming to our region to support the work of the Puget Sound Regional Council. Additionally, two weeks ago, we had the State of the City address, so I want to say thank you to everyone, thank you, council, for being there. A shout out to our amazing multimedia team for putting that presentation together. If you did not get a chance to be, to be in attendance, it is on our Facebook and YouTube channels. Lots of, I was able to present a lot of good information about the work that this council and the city has done over the last year and some positive things that we've got coming in the future. Tomorrow, I will be hosting a coffee and conversation event up on the West Hill at Cutter's Point Coffee from 9:00 to 10:00. Opportunity for residents just to come out, grab a cup of coffee, have a conversation, question and answer time, just a really good chance to connect. I'm going to wrap up my report with some sad news. A week ago, had the opportunity, along with Chief Padilla and Councilmember Troutner, to attend a memorial service. Many of you know Richard Wilkinson. Richard was a staple in our community at our council meetings, at community events, always volunteering and being, being just an involved resident, a really good example of what it means to be a part of your community. And Richard lost his battle with cancer and sadly passed away several weeks ago, and so had an opportunity to be there to support Linda and his family at that memorial service. And I just hadn't had a chance to share that with the, with the council, and I know that many of you know Richard, and we're also very grateful for the work that he's done in our community. So just want to offer our condolences to the Wilkinson family and say that Richard will definitely be missed. With that, I am going to turn it over to Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A follow-up from last week, I talked, or not last week, two weeks ago, I talked about the Blue Beam issue we're having in ECD and Public Works, and that's a program that we use to do plans review. Happy to say that that program is back up and running, full steam ahead. So the backup we had has been cleared and things are going well with our permitting programs again. So our, again, our staff did a fantastic job of having a workaround to keep things on track, but it's really nice to have the program we depend on back up and running. Also, today, we submitted two of our federal requests to our federal delegation. As a quick reminder, these are two requests that you approved. One was the joint request with the Kent School District for the Mill Creek Middle School Project, and the second was the Mobile Command Police Vehicle. So this is the beginning of a very long process, and, but we have officially filed and we're moving forward with that. And then finally, just a quick note, we had, I think we had a pretty good meeting at the Kent School District last week. We had a lot of Kent presentations, but they, they went well, and I'm proud of staff and happy with staff, and I think we represented the city well in that, in that meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Pat. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our Committee of the Whole this afternoon and a council workshop this afternoon as well. Both of those videos are on social media and City of Kent page. For our workshop, I do want to highlight, we had an update from our Riverbend Golf Course, and I want to, you know, share with our community that we are actually doing a lot better than we did a few years ago. We had 600K over profit in 2023, and we have a new manager, Eric Henrich, who is the manager at the golf course. And I want to highlight that employees who are working there have been there for 20-plus years. I mean, that really shows and shows care and a good working environment that we offer at our golf courses. And some of the highlights of 2023 were over 70,000 rounds of golf were played, and it is one of the three top golf courses in the state sometimes. So I think that's, or within the last few years, and I think that's, that's amazing. Our staff is working there almost the whole year, 362 days of the year, staff is working at the golf course. I mean, that is, that's impressive and amazing, and how much we appreciate all the work that they do for our community. The other presentation we had was for Project Be Free, and that is an amazing nonprofit serving our community, working with our police officers here in Kent. They help our community on DB calls, supporting families and individuals with any support services that are needed. And that program has been utilized by our officers more and more since the beginning of it, and we are starting to see success rates of how much our community is in need of such a program that is serving families as a whole and not one person versus the other. So, and they serve in 17 languages and always looking to offer more services, and they're also, during their hiring processes, looking at how, what languages they can serve and what communities are, you know, being left behind so they can offer those services. And I'm looking forward to what that program is going to do for our community. So great need being fulfilled there. Thankful to the founders, Joel and Katia, for that program. And I sit on Growth Management Planning Council as well with King County. We had our meeting last week, and we worked on our work plan for 2024, and we also had an update from Affordable Housing Committee, that is a subcommittee for Growth Management Planning Council for King County. All that information is available on King County's website, along with the video of the meeting. And I also celebrated a holy celebration at the Kent Hindu Temple. That's my first time ever celebrating holy, and that was amazing. I was covered in color, and it was great because, and then I had to figure out how to get in my car and get home and then change my clothes without getting it everywhere, but, but it was great. Community was great, and I enjoyed being there, and I hope maybe more of us will join them next year. It's a great, small space.
So two, gratefully, two celebrations in Kent. I attended one the week before. The hard part was, is that the chief and I were both there, but we were heading then to the memorial service, so unable to participate in that portion of the event.
I had an event right after. So I had to go home, wash everything.
So much fun.
Yeah, it is fun. So, and with that, I'm going to start on my left here with Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam President. I sit on the Regional Transit Committee. We met on March 20th, and we had a presentation on the Rapid Rise Prioritization Plan. During 2021, our committee spent a lot of time, most of the year, working on the service guidelines for King County Metro. So it's great to see that they're using those guidelines as they talk about updating routes, adding new routes across King County. We continue to see strong ridership on Route 150, but also continue the conversation to make sure we have choices for our riders trying to get from the east hill to the west hill. We have Route 165 that goes from Green River to Kent Des Moines and then up to Berrien, but we really need to have more options for those people trying to get from the east and west hill and back. And we also updated, or I'm sorry, approved our work plan for 2024. I am also Vice Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board, and I serve on that along with Councilmember Boyd and Councilmember Larmour. We met on March 20th. It's, March 20th is a very busy day for me. We had several promotions, two to captain, one to battalion chief. We also had a proclamation for procurement month for Professionals Day. We appointed a new member to the Citizens Advisory Committee and very happy that it is a retired firefighter from Tuck Willa, so great to have her join that committee. We also will be having, the RFA is going to be putting on a training in July for CPR, and it's going to be open to the public. More information will come on what date that will be and where that will be, but we also had some information shared with us on survival rates of people when CPR is initiated. And it's not just coming from EMS that are responding to the scene, it is people like all of us that know CPR, that are performing those services before EMS can arrive, and increasing lifesaving measures for people in our community. We also approved an ILA for the FD Cares with the City of Renton, so it's great to see that program expanding across King County. We've seen the great work that it's done here for us in Kent. And lastly, as we work on updating the documents for the RFA, working towards that five-year accreditation that will come in August, we received the strategic plan for 2024 to 2028, and that is available. And that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam President. All right. I serve as the Parks and Human Services Subject Matter Chair for our Committee of the Whole Meetings. We had two exciting topics tonight. The first was property purchase agreement for the second vacant lot next to Kresson. So that whole corner area right there, minus the building, will be. So that whole corner area right there, minus the building, will be part of a park. And then we accepted an agreement with Earth Corps to fix the Mill Creek Canyon Trail where it got washed out. All right. I also serve as the Human Services Commission Liaison, and we are starting the grant process. We had our first equity and grant-making training session, and we are building on our past year's trainings in this area. Right now, we're working with a consultant on the commission to develop a set of guiding principles of our grant process where, when we're evaluating the grants. I also serve on the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, and this month, Chief Padilla gave a legislative update on police pursuits. I also serve on the Washington Tree Equity Collaborative as an A W C representative, and we got a briefing on Spokaneopee. That's Spokane's program to plant 100 street trees every year in residential neighborhoods, especially low-income areas. They're also holding the first Tree Equity Collaborative Learning Lab in May, and it's focused on partnerships and collaborations, and that's for cities and organizations that are out there planting trees. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Madam President. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will have our next meeting next Friday. So I'll have a report on that at our upcoming session.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I am the Chair of the Public Safety. We have nothing to report out tonight. And then I am represented for a pick on the Silent City Association, and we'll be meeting on next Wednesday, and I'll report out then. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyes. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam President. I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire also with Vice Chair Troutner, and she kind of explained everything. But what I would like to talk about, though, this past Saturday, I had the pleasure to dine with Chief Andy Grill, Deputy Chief Andy Grill, and Shamsus Isaac, and Commissioner Awal Farah, and Council President. We all met at Medina Bar and Grill for the break for Ramadan, and it was, we had some great food, lovely people. I mean, we had a real good time, you know, and I thought I would share that with you. Just come out and enjoy the food sometime, real good food. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much, Council President. Arts Commission had their meeting. The new show will be going up soon. We just wrapped up the Kids' Art Show, and we have wrapped up the Spotlight Series. The new art exhibit, the summer art exhibit, had well over 800 entries before the middle of March. It didn't close until the end of March, so they just had loads of entries coming in. And the actual show, of course, those will be judged and all, the actual show and reception will begin or be June 5th. So put that on your calendar because the public is invited. Over in Centennial will start at 6:00 PM. For Public Works, we were able to receive more grant money tonight. So we will be doing some road diets, so making it safer for some of our bicycle and pedestrian folks. Let's see, there is the MID, Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee. We have been looking at, as many of you know, book the inequities in mental health. This meeting, we looked at specifically children's mental health and what has happened over the years from the AMA not accepting doctors, black doctors or doctors of color, the inequities in some of the funding, some of the reimbursements that go to smaller organizations. So your rural clinic, the small hospital, that may be in an area that is predominantly people of color. The reimbursements are not the same. Mental health reimbursements are less than those for physical health, which is not a very good draw to get people into that field. Anyway, there were lots of examples and reasons that were given, and we also had a report on crisis mental health and looked at the intersections of the mobile crisis unit and what we've been working on and talking quite a bit about for the adult, for the adult mental health, as in the different centers that we are going to be built and what happens now, how long it takes to react, the different levels of care and what those time limits are. And so we've suggested putting some of those together so that they will be all in one instead of having the crisis unit over here and everything else separate. So that is going to be hopefully approved. It was approved by us. That will hopefully be approved by the council. And that leaves K C D, King Conservation District. The districting committees have started meeting. We have not had another advisory committee meeting, but that will be coming up soon. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. And Madam Mayor, that concludes our report.
All right. Thank you, Council President. We do not have a public hearing this evening, but we will move on next to public comment. Public comment period is an opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issues that relate to the City of Kent or to an agenda item council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including to support or oppose a ballot measure or any candidate seeking public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches but must instead speak concerning a matter of the city council, the agenda, or on items concerning general city business. Kim, could you please call the roll, or call our speakers? Not the roll, we're not going back to the beginning.
Thank you. We have two people signed up to speak today. Katrina Doan is going to speak on a modified fireworks ban, and T J Peterson is going to speak on housing.
All right. If you could join us up at the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record, and you do have three minutes, and there will be a timer on the screen.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Doan. I'm from Tuck Willa, Washington, just up the street. And you all got an email from me, but I'm here to talk about, and hopefully tickle your thinking a little bit. I hope that when I'm done, you go, hmm, I never thought about it that way. And I want to talk about a topic that I think we all share the same passion and goal, and that is of increased peace and safety in our communities during the Fourth of July holiday around fireworks. It's what I am absolutely passionate about and why I'm now working with many cities in the region on an option that most people don't know exists. For decades, it was an all-or-nothing choice that cities had. All community-based fireworks are illegal, didn't work so well because there's ones that really torment people, or all community-based fireworks are banned. And most people have found that doesn't work so well either because people can go elsewhere and get some that are worse. The email I sent you, and what I'm absolutely passionate about sharing, is that there is an option toward that same goal of increased peace, increased safety, that is getting very data-documented results. And that is the option of what we call a modified ban, allowing the items that statistics show don't cause the stress. They don't go boom. They don't fly in the air. They allow families to have a little bit of fun. And I am absolutely passionate, like I said, about sharing this. I worked with Tuck Willa, and when I presented it to Mayor Ekberg, he was the mayor at the time, he looked at me and he said, Katrina, we've had a 25-year trial of a ban, and we certainly know that hasn't worked, so I think we owe it to our community to try something different. So we talked to the council members, and a lot of them, when I first approached them, did the, really? No. As we talked, and as I shared, because it's not an option that a lot of people know about, they shifted to, oh, that kind of makes sense. So in the end, when they voted, it was a unanimous vote by the Tuck Willa Council to try the modified ban. At the end of the season, the police chief came in, and he was just ecstatic. He said, that's the lowest number of calls we've had in over 20 years. So they are thrilled about this option. It's not something many people know. It takes education of the community, because this is a hot topic, to use a bad pun. But they expected people to come in after the Fourth of July and complain. Nobody came, except for C TAC, who said, we want to know about this. What did you do? Same process with C TAC, only the new addition in C TAC is that Fire Marshal Napier came in, and he did a presentation about why this was a great idea from a fire official's perspective. He said, the ones you're allowing in a modified ban don't cause the problems. C TAC also went from hmm to a... So that's why I've had many, many, I know many people in Kent, and they say, Katrina, would you please go talk to Kent? And then I had a couple of officials approach me, just to share, would this help Kent? The goal is the same, peace, safety. That's what we want during the Fourth of July, to be able to celebrate. I hope I've tickled your thinking a little bit. I hope the fact that the City of Tuck Willa officials are so thrilled and that Fire Marshal Napier is positive may cause you to go, hmm, I'd love to talk to you more. Tuck Willa would love to talk to you more. I love Kent. It's my next-door city, and I hope maybe we can work together on this option.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is T J Peterson.
Hello, Mayor. T J Peterson, I'm a Kent resident. Last week, I talked about the rentals and the tenant protections going on in a little bit, but it's kind of familiar with Webster Court over there. About 20 years ago, we had a bunch of apartments that were built with tax credits as affordable, to be affordable apartments. We've talked about the housing issues that we're facing and preserving naturally occurring affordable housing. Well, there's been some buildings that are selling now that are losing their tax credit after 20 years that are going through some rent increases. This is going to put more seniors out on the streets. We all know what these increased rents will do. I've talked about RealPage and the collusion of the property owners and the managers, a lot of them who don't even live in this city. King County has a good ordinance. It would be, serve us well to allow renters to be able to defend themselves and to maybe balance the market out a little bit. We've all known for years that the housing market is broken. This is not normal, the way things are going. Our wages haven't kept up with these housing prices. God bless Tuck Willa, they rose the wage. Woo-hoo. A lot of other communities are now doing that. Ooh, that would even increase sales taxes. But anyways, let's talk about the homeowners. The realtors of America have just been fined a half a billion dollars, almost $500 million for colluding on prices and fees and commissions. The housing market is broken. We have some people locally in the region that are doing everything they can to obstruct density, obstruct affordable housing. When people raise questions about it, they get gaslit. Oh, yeah, maybe you don't understand the market and all this kind of stuff. The market's broken. We have a lot of people making these decisions, and a lot of people are getting hurt. And it's a simple process. I think you should join our neighbors, Tuck Willa, Renton, other cities have instituted these tenant protections close to what King County has. It's a simple ordinance. It doesn't protect the bad guys. It just kind of levels the playing field, maybe gives renters a chance to fight back when it comes to even homeowner development and our planning process that's coming up. I would recommend that we talk to Olympia. Last year, there was a House Bill 2113 called the Housing Accountability Act to make sure all the cities in the region are actually following the Growth Management Act. There's a little part in there called the Builder's Remedy, that when cities are found that they're kind of obstructing the permit process that the builders get to go through with their projects, we're seeing the problems around in the region. That's the Housing Accountability Act, to keep the cities around here accountable so that they're not acting like, you know, de facto HOAs and NIMBs. And I just say that I would love to see you do something for the least amongst us, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Kim, any other speakers?
I have none.
All right. We will move on to the consent calendar. This is a compilation of items that the council has discussed and had an opportunity to ask questions about, have moved out of committee without controversy. It looks like we have items A through F this evening. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have no other business this evening, but we do have two bids. Joining us is Chad Behren, our Public Works Director for 2024 Crack Ceiling Bid and Reef Road Roundabouts Project Bid.
Thank you, Mayor. First one up is a maintenance item, our crack ceiling for 2024, go around and clean out cracking in the pavement and fill it with asphalt to help extend the pavement life. Keeps water out of the upper edges of the pavement and helps extend life. It looks ugly, but the streets keep going for a few more years. So this is, again, an annual contract. We had two bids this year, a little bid coming from Central Paving for $183,000. The engineer's estimate was $221,000. So unless there are any questions? That's it.
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the 2024 Crack Ceiling Project to Central Paving in the amount of $183,421, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, next one.
Thank you. Very excited about this next one. This is the Reef Road Roundabouts Project. This includes a Transportation Improvement Board Grant of $1,595,000, and then the remainder of it will come from a combination of street fund and transportation impact fees. This is a project that we've had a number of inquiries about over the years with regard to getting up and down the West Hill, the intersections at Lake Fenwick Road and South 253rd Street, which is about two-thirds of the way up the hill. So folks won't notice it for a little while here because we're going to be under construction, but things are changing on this route up the West Hill. You've got a road diet that's going underneath I-5 that we, that talked about at Committee of the Whole between Pack Highway and Military Road. And then this project, it'll come from 516, or near 516, with a new roundabout at Lake Fenwick Road and 253rd, with a narrowing of the section from four lanes to a road diet on this section as well. That'll leave us a section between 253rd and around West Fenwick Park that we want to continue working on, and we look forward in the coming years to try and get some more grant dollars to improve that section of road. But this lower section, we're really excited about having changes to the road and hoping to calm traffic and slow some speeds down, folks getting up and down West Hill. So we had four bids on the project. Low bid was Northwest Cascade at $4,283,000 with an engineer's estimate just shy of $4.8 million. And look forward to having this one under construction.
All right. Thanks, Chad. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the Reef Road Roundabouts Project to Northwest Cascade Inc. in the amount of $4,283,587 and 49 cents, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Chad. I know that there are a lot of neighbors in that area that are really excited this project is coming.
We're excited to have it going. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item number 11, executive session. We do not have one this evening. Item number 12 is adjournment. Oh, sorry. Would you like to, yes, would you like to?
Would you like to come up here in the back, the Boy Scouts? Can you share your name and why you're here with us tonight? The podium, please. Thank you.
I'm Austin Morgan. I'm here from Troop 406, working on my communications and citizenship in the community merit badge. Our badges.
Well, thank you for being here tonight.
To get them, I had to come to a meeting and write down your debates and both sides of why it's good and why it could be bad.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming and spending some time with us.
Do you like a picture?
Oh, did you, would you like to come and have a picture? I don't have anybody to take the picture.
We'll do it.
Chad, do you want to come back up?
Do it one of our phones. I'm going to share it.
I can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to come right here? Very excited to be here, so. Do you write front and center? It's okay. Just step on it.
All right, here we go.
My chair. My chair was really far away. Trying to, what are you doing to me?
I wouldn't do that.
All right. That brings us to the bottom of our agenda. If there is nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned.